Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 17th, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council. You can call the order at 601-BM. We have a roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mataro.
Here.
Tananyan.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. The life salute tonight will be led by Councilman Najarian, the invocation by Rabbi Simcha Bachman Shabad Jewish Center of Glendale Footy Communities.
Please rise and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God in heaven, I thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you and worship you as we see fit. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. We are commanded by Scripture to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task, specifically during this holiday season. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in the city of Glendale. May God bless our republic and our beloved city of Glendale. Amen.
Amen.
Can we have your report, please?
The agenda for the December 17th, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, December 12th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. I'll take 3A.
3A is...
I'll do that.
Go ahead.
I'll take it. Ms. Beers doesn't need to do that. This is the last time this council will meet until January 21st. So don't plan on showing up any time before then. It's going dark over the Christmas holidays and then, of course, we can... January 3rd, the council members, including myself, will be at a airport, Bob Hope Airport Commission retreat, or whatever you want to call it. Happens to be in Hawaii. Can't turn it down. It's held every year. We have congressmen and senators. Congressman and senators come from Washington. It's a chance for us to talk about the airport, which is important to this community. So as for myself, then I'll be going on to Oahu with my wife, where her family is, to see my 93-year-old mother-in-law, who's been in ICU for three months now. Maybe the last time, so I'm taking my first vacation to Hawaii in five, six years along with my wife. I think we finally earned it. My wife wants to go. So, and for other reasons, I don't know the others, but we'll be back on January 21st, I'm sure, with a loaded agenda. And I hope you all have a very merry Christmas and happy new year. With that, let's go to 3B.
3B is Mayor's commendations to the Glendale Bears Youth Football Team for making it through the playoffs and to the championship games.
Okay, and I have a proclamation. Okay, Bears, come on up. And then I'll read the proclamation first. Come on up.
Oh, wow. Wow, you guys are...
You don't say a word. You just stand here. Okay, all photographers that are taking pictures, come forth. Come on up here. All photographers, up here behind us.
Thank you.
And we're gonna have city pins for all of you. Split some up. We'll give it to all of you. We're almost ready. Give a few. Wait, save some for the other side of the hall.
Yes, I do.
There's hardly any left.
There you go.
There's camera, am I going?
Yeah.
Where's camera?
It's the other side. Oh, there's one. I have just enough for this team. We each want to give some out. In a minute. Let me read the proclamation first. Boy, we got a good turnout photographers. Okay, this is Mayor's commendation to the Glendale Bears Youth Football. Congratulations on being named the 2013 Baseline League Gremlin Division Champions in recognition of your season-long dedication, hard work. I commend the excellent year your team has had. It must be a wonderful feeling to have made it as far as the championship game. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you a bright future ahead and many more championships. Okay? I'll bring that down, and they're all gonna be pinned down.
Congratulations. Who else plays deep bass?
Who else hasn't gotten one?
Congratulations. Oh, you got one already. You got one.
I already got one.
Safe corner bass. Play safety. They've got it.
Photographers, your coach is gonna talk.
On behalf of the Glendale Bears Youth Organization, we would like to thank you for this. It means a lot. Kids have worked really hard all season, and it paid off. No, we didn't win the whole thing, but we got far enough. I'm happy with everything, and I'm sure they are. This is Adela, our A.D. for the season. She had the hardest job on the season, on the team, so I want her to say something.
Go ahead, it's your chance.
It's my chance to shine. Okay, well, boys, I am very, very proud of you. I know most of you were in the Gremlin team last season. We didn't have a winning season, and this season, we came back with a vengeance, and we almost took it. We lost it, but I am very, very proud of each and single one of you. Thank you.
Good. Congratulations. Okay, you can go home. You don't want to see the rest of this meeting. Have a nice dinner somewhere.
Thank you, Mayor.
A moment of silence while they escape. Go to a nice pizza place or something.
We made our reservation center.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
The whole team?
Yes.
Where are you going?
Shakey's.
Oh.
They're all going to Shakey's Pizza, one big meal. You can't see it at home, folks, but half the council chambers is totally empty now. Talk about... Talk about parents coming down for their kids. Wow. Okay, one person's moving to the other side of the room. That's kind of unusual. Okay, let's go to the other. There's two that stayed on the empty side. Would you read that in the record?
3C is Mayor's commendation to Giuseppe's Pizzeria in Montrose for winning the Tasters' Choice Award during the Glendale's 2014 Rose Flow Entry Fundraiser.
And if you guys want to come up, I'll read the proclamation, or the commendation. In recognition of your participation in 2013 Rose Flow fundraiser meatball tasting competition, congratulations on being voted as Tasters' Choice for favorite meatball. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I would like to thank you for your time and dedication during the fundraiser. Best wishes for many years to follow. Now, after that, this following Saturday, I went to your place, saw a couple of the owners, Anthony and...
That's my dad.
Oh, your dad.
He was able to make it, so he made me come tonight.
And Vincent Zarian is also one of the owners. I thought I might see him tonight. And I tasted the meatballs. I had to make sure they were good, and they were delicious. The only person I was expecting to see today was Charlotte, who was our waitress there. Miss personality and everything. And during that discussion, we discussed her university that she went to, and she was hoping that the BCS game in the Rose Bowl would feature her alumni team, Florida State.
Yeah.
So she has a bunch of friends coming out, so if anybody has seen, even seen Florida's, I mean, a BCS bowl game ticket, let her know. She's interested in going. I'm afraid she won't be able to get there, but I was gonna tease her out here today on this, but you got great pizzas, and meatballs are excellent. Whole family recipe, right?
Yes.
Guys, if you could state your name for the record. State your name for the record.
My name is Ole Olson. I am the general manager of Giuseppe's.
And I'm Chris Santello. I'm one of the waiters there.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we just wanted to say that we are very proud to have won the Tasters' Choice for our meatballs. Our recipes and our food is something we take a very great deal of pride in. We are honored, however, by being able to participate in the fundraising efforts for Meatball, the real Meatball, the Bear. So, thank you again. We very much appreciate this, and we are honored. Thank you.
I just guess that the Bears couldn't have all got into your restaurant in Montrose. It is delicious. And those meatball, the recipe goes back how far, I was told?
I believe it's three generations.
Three generations. So they're very good meatballs. And just so you guys know as well as everybody else, the Glendale Rose Float will be the third float in the parade. The first entry will be Honda, which is a sponsor of the parade, then the second float, and then we are third, meaning we'll have... You couldn't get better coverage for a float in the parade, so look forward. It'll be great. I'm gonna be interviewed on Channel 5 at 7:30 in the morning, too, so additional honor I'm getting.
We'll probably be asleep.
You gonna be there?
As I said, we'll probably be asleep.
Well, ordinarily, I would be, because I'll put in over 100 hours of work before this decorated. It's going great, and we've had two workdays so far, and it's going along swell. And I'm not looking forward to getting up early in the morning on the first. I like to sit in bed and watch the parade, but this time I will, because my wife wants to go, and then I get asked to speak, so... Again, I thank you for your part in it, and we'll see how we do. So thank you very much for coming down. Say hello to the bosses up there, okay?
We will, yeah.
I'll be back again.
See you soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, what is next, please?
City Council and staff comments.
Ms. Friedman?
Just wanted to mention some of the great events we had last week. It was, of course, a holiday week, so there was lots of stuff going on, but I just want to highlight a few of them. First was the retirement party for Chief Ron DePampa, who we will all miss terribly, I believe, in this community. He's been a great chief of police. This party was a bit of a debacle. It was lovely, but we were supposed to have been allowed about 400 people, and at the day of the event, DreamWorks notified the city that they would only allow 250 people. So people were called and asked not to come. Chief DePampa had to ask some of his family members not to go. And when I got to the party, people were being turned away at the gate. So it was a bit of an embarrassment for the city and for the chief, but it was a lovely party, and it just shows how much love there was for him in the community that so many people wanted to attend. So, goodbye, chief. We will miss you. Next, the Davidia Meramian Educational Foundation had their annual dinner, where they honored many people in the community and many groups. They're an educational partner with GUSD. They offer after-school classes, and they do a really great job, and I want to congratulate them on all of their good work. And lastly, the Armenian Chamber of Commerce also had their gala. It was very well-attended. It was very celebratory. It was a lot of fun, and I thank them for letting us participate. There was a lot more going on last week and this week, but I just wanted to highlight those few for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
Um...
Tananyan?
Just one event that we were all there, including Councilmember Friedman. The Glendale Police Officers Association Holiday/Christmas Party was also last week. We're very happy to be there and show our support for our peace officers, for the great work that they do, and together ushering the new year and hope for a great, safe year for all of us. And in the end, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and it's a great time to spend with the family, and that's what I look forward to doing in Glendale.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I, again, would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. But guess what? Don't celebrate too much, because we are gonna have many DUI checkpoints throughout the city. And we are giving tickets, because we want to remove drunk drivers from our streets, whether they are our resident drunk drivers or our out-of-city drunk drivers. We don't care. The police department is gearing up, and the last thing you need is a drunk-driving arrest and citation, because not only will it ruin your record, you're endangering other people's lives, but the average cost of dealing with those is gonna be $3,000, $4,000, sometimes $5,000 with attorney's fees involved. So please, enjoy the holidays, but drive responsibly.
Thank you. And with that note, what is next?
Next is consent items. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
I have... Well, cards. Is there a motion?
Consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mataro.
Yes.
Tananyan.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. Thank you. What is next, please?
Next on the agenda is listed as oral communications, but we will split oral communications into two portions. This portion is reserved for three-minute community event announcements.
I have one card. Diane Acosta.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Diane Acosta with the Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, and we're announcing our event on January 5th at 4:00 PM at the First Baptist Church of Glendale. We're having a really wonderful concert. It's our birthday party slash holiday party, and it's a little after Christmas for some folks, right around the time period for others, so we decided to kind of just put it all in one spot. Anyhow, we will be featuring comedian Emo Phillips, who is also a Glendale resident. He will be narrating Carnival of the Animals, which is a delightful orchestral piece and narration. And we are also premiering a brand-new cello work from an area composer, Sharon Farber, and it's a solo cello piece with orchestra. And also, we will also be having two pianists. We're doing a... I'm sorry, it's not on here, and I forgot the name of the piece. I do believe it's a Bach piece for two pianos, with pianist Rufus Choi and Janar Resnick performing as well. We're expecting a great outcome, and as always, we're gonna offer free cake from Billy's Deli to the audience members. And there's free parking, which, you know, pays for itself, you know, if you go to any event in L.A. area. Also, we have $1 student tickets available, so whether you be elementary school or college or going back to school after retiring, as long as you have a student ID, we'll give you a ticket for $1. And other than that, regular tickets are $15 to $100. For the $100 tickets, we are doing a special tour of the church and meeting with musicians, rehearsal on January 2nd as well. So if you're interested in touring the First Baptist Church, it's got a very interesting history to it. Those are for the $100 tickets, the conductor's circle. So we do hope to see some of, at least some of you there. And our box office, our glendalephil.com. Our phone number, if you don't have a computer, it is area code 323-663-3601. And again, this is at the First Baptist Church of Glendale, and that's at 209 North Louise Street in Glendale, 92106.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick question. Whose birthday is it?
The orchestra's.
Oh, there you go.
It's our fourth birthday, so, yes.
Congratulations.
When Emo Phillips narrated with you guys Peter and the Wolf last year...
Yes, yes.
It was one of the funniest things I have ever seen. If this is half as funny, people should all rush and go, because...
It's gonna be a lot of fun.
A great orchestra, but a really, really outstanding comedian. And then he did religious jokes just to honor the venue.
Yes.
And everybody was rolling in the aisles. It was so funny.
Yeah, he's a very funny man, and we really enjoy working with him and having him narrate these pieces.
Great.
All right. Thanks. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. What is next?
Next, under action items, 8A is City Manager Regarding Citizenship Satisfaction Survey conducted by the Rose Institute of State and Local Government in July 2013. 8A1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Mr. Achoa, I know this is a book on it, and we all see, but it's online, too, isn't it?
If it is not, it certainly will be as part of the agenda packet. I believe it is currently. This item is something that, as we try to fill out our performance profile and assure the council and assure the community that where the council has placed emphasis is where the community's interests truly lie. We have to have the courage of our convictions, and that means testing the market and the marketplace of ideas with the type of survey that you see before you. We retained the Rose Institute of State and Local Government to do an independent, third-party, statistically valid, random sample survey, and here with us tonight is one of the senior members of that team, Mr. Doug Johnson, who will give you the Reader's Digest version of that very long book that you have in front of you.
I was gonna say, you could talk for many hours on this, so...
So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Highlight version.
Yes, this will definitely be the short version.
And I just want to share, everybody understands, it's online, so if you all want to read the details, go online, City Glendale, and read it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name's Douglas Johnson, and on behalf of Doctors Bush, Miller, and Peterson, and Mr. Huntoun, it is a pleasure to be here and a pleasure to work with the city on this. I will say, it was in last week's agenda packet online. It is in this week's agenda packet online, but before people print it, they should be aware.
It's thick.
It's thick. But there is a ton of information in here, and I have to say, I was looking forward to presenting this, because I think this is really good news for the city. We often do these as kind of a baseline when a city is starting a big improvement or community outreach effort to improve things. Glendale's doing pretty well already, so happy to go through this. Like I said, I will go through this fairly quickly, not even cover everything on the slides, but happy to answer any questions. And obviously, there's tons to go in and dig into the cross tabs and all that kind of stuff.
Can I ask something before you go into the substance of it?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you give just a little background on the institute?
Oh, sure. Yes, the Rose Institute is part of Claremont McKenna College, which is one of the Claremont Colleges out there. We actually just celebrated our 40-year anniversary a couple weeks ago. So we're one of the few institutes in the state that focus on state and local issues, everything from demographics to survey research to a lot of economics and finance events. And then we are probably best known for redistricting work, although we've gotten more and more into economic forecasts and the state of the economy, things that we partner with the Anderson School at UCLA on.
Okay, thank you.
So this survey is a, as the city manager said, statistically valid, random sample survey of 400 residents, which is our standard sample size. The margin of error on that is a little under 5%. And first of all, starting off with the general rating of Glendale as a community, this is really high. Overwhelmingly, 8, 9, 10, few 7s, really nothing at the low end. So just on a general impression, people are very happy with Glendale. As we'll go into this, you'll see there are some things that are stronger than others, but keep in mind, this is all in the context of a very positive view. Working with city staff, we came up with a list of questions and things to focus on and drill into, and we focused on downtown Glendale and on the Montrose area. I have to say, both came out very well. Downtown, these ratings are very good as well. 26% and 8. We get, once you put in the 9s and 10s, over half are giving it very high ratings. And the number that actually really... Well, I'll get to... The number that really surprised me is how many people are coming to downtown every week as well. Before I get to that, Old Town Montrose, similar skewing to the right of the chart, more 5s and 6s. And where this really comes out of, I think, is when we get to how many people are going there. I think with people going to Montrose regularly, its ratings are as good as or even better than downtown, but obviously, no surprise, it draws fewer people than downtown. Montrose would have a real problem if it got flooded with downtown crowds every day. So, Glendale, what residents like best? No surprise here. You all probably hear about this all the time. You know, extremely safe city, and this comes out every year, the sense of community, sense of atmosphere, quality of life, really, all these come across. The safety one is the one that really jumps out.
I'm sorry, were schools a component in that, or was that absorbed in one of the other... Because what we hear is, we love the school district and the schools, so was that not a choice, or...
Yeah, it wasn't one of the listed choices. We tend to... When we bring in schools, we get a whole different...
Okay. I just don't want the school board members to have heart attacks while they're watching us.
That's a very good point. It's not mentioned because people didn't like it, it's because we didn't go there with a questionnaire.
Thank you.
What residents like least? Glendale and Burbank are the two cities where I've seen this come up in big numbers, where we ask them, what do you like least? And we go through our list, and people come back with 30% nothing. We love everything. It's a very strong statement about the city. Obviously, we're being in the L.A. area. Traffic and commuting's gonna come up, taxes. This other is essentially, you know, everyone has their own gripe kind of thing that they took the chance to throw in, but no consistent answers in there. Atmosphere, obviously, being in the L.A. basin, we have our air quality issues as well there. But again, do people feel safe? Overwhelmingly safe. How happy are they with city services? You know, you guys sit up here and hear all the time, you know, people come up with their gripes and concerns, but these surveys are good in that we're doing a statistical sampling and really digging in and remembering, yes, people have concerns and they're raising issues, but overall, people are very happy with how the city is run, and you can see it here. 72% satisfied, 13% very satisfied, only 8% dissatisfied, and 3% very. So really, off-the-chart marks on that. This slide, I did want to mention, because we put it in there, and it is in the online materials. No surprise, as with everywhere, fire and police always, unless there's some huge problem, always come in tops in terms of the very satisfied, especially when people feel as safe as they are here. Library arts, community services, coming in close to each other in the total satisfied ratings. Library, obviously, has more passionate supporters. The one thing I do want to mention, community development always comes in low, because A, most residents don't know what community development does, and B, they hear the word "development." And so they're not... A lot of the respondents aren't answering about the staff of the Community Development Department. They're saying, there's too much development in town, and I'm against that. So I did want to flag that, as some people are worried about when they see those numbers. But even then, community development, over 50% satisfied or very satisfied. Over on the... 50% satisfied or very satisfied. Over on the right side is also useful to look at the dissatisfied numbers, you know, fire, essentially nothing, police 14%, library arts, only 6% dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. We actually had to put those two categories together so that they'd show up. Community services, 9%, public works, 16%, water and power, 25%. Given the ongoing debates about that, that doesn't surprise me, but that, that is where that shows up, that people are happy with services, but there is controversy there. And then policy direction. And again, I'm going through this quickly, you can ask questions if you want to come back to any of this. But again, safety and police, fire, emergency is always top. Infrastructure and utilities came out pretty high here compared to some of the other ones we've done. The other one that came out higher than it usually does is fiscal responsibility. Again, that's more of a hot topic here in Glendale than in most jurisdictions, although rising just about everywhere in local government today. Preserve neighborhood character, no surprise there, about 85%. Managed growth and development, that tends to be an issue that people don't really care about in the abstract, big picture. They tend to care about when you're talking about the development down the street from them. So in these abstract ones, it doesn't come in as high. Same thing with balanced mix of housing.
Well, education did pretty good. Recreation, education.
Yes, yes, that's obviously a priority as well. So we asked some questions, just general questions, kind of feel the water for support for parks or library or safety assessment district. People, very positive. I do add the caveat that this is just testing the water, I'm glad to see you're doing a more in-depth dig into this issue. We weren't asking about dollar values or anything specific about this, but people generally are very supportive in this, and we've seen this in the schools as well, where they're generally supportive of ideas for raising money for specific purposes, like parks, library, and public safety. So again, your first taste is pretty good on this. It'll be very interesting to see when you start throwing dollar figures out and see where people come in on that. Then I'll skip over them. We have the demographics of the respondents. Female, 56%, and it's rounding, obviously. Male, 45%. Age. We did go into ethnicity questions, asking about people's ethnicity, and then in the cross tabs is the breakdown by ethnicity of all these questions. And, oh, updated. Thank you. Thought I was gonna say Matt Peterson, since he was gonna be here last week. Your staff is on the ball. Happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, my only concern is, I don't believe you talked to Mr. Moe Hill. I don't think he was part of your survey.
I will say, you know, those issues, it's kind of what I was hinting at earlier, but there are issues. You saw the fiscal responsibilities hired here, the water and power, there were some shows up there. But again, these are issues that we're debating on the base of a very satisfied community.
How do we compare with other cities that you've done this in?
Very well, actually. I was happy to come present this one, because I presented some that are not so happy news for, for city councils. But we've done this in Monrovia, we've done this in Pomona, Duarte, ones I've presented recently. And this is definitely the most positive.
Really?
Duarte was similarly more, much more positive than anyone expected it to be. But, but this was, I think, the highest numbers I've seen.
Hey, Glendale.
Yeah, exactly. It's the reason we all live here.
I would just add one thing to it, that you see a lot of indicators here on, on the slides and in the report that Doug's presented, that kind of makes sense to you in terms of what you've seen and what you've heard, and sitting at this dais, the decisions that you make. And so it all kind of fits and, and again, makes sense. And I think that's important because, you know, you make decisions, you make policy, we execute it. But to the extent that you have somebody coming in from the outside unbiased and, is able to confirm that which you see and which you feel and which you think, hopefully what that does is not only bolster the council's confidence in the direction that you're headed, but also the community's faith in the direction that the council's headed. And I think that plays out quite significantly in this, in the survey.
One thing that I always think about, when the critics come in here, I do it virtually every week, I think, this city has over 104,000 people. When even five or 10 come in here and rip the city up, I figure there's at least, no, over 190,000. What is it, 194,000? Over 194,000 that aren't here. So the mindset I have to take is, okay, you're dissatisfied, you're one of the 3%, you can sell your house and move, nobody's keeping you here. The vast majority of the people apparently think we're okay, and your survey shows that. So can't ask for more. Mr. Najarian?
Well, first, congratulations, Mayor.
On what?
For presiding over such a well-run city.
Well, come on, this is a report over the last few years. All of you take-
We owe it all to you, Mr. Weaver.
You've been on council.
What are you trying to set me up for?
So I think this, I feel very good.
Something's gonna happen I don't like.
I feel very good. I think this validates all the efforts of staff and council in terms of trying to make Glendale a premier city. I am very proud of these numbers. I think this is perhaps the best, what is it that guy always asks for? Quality of life indicators. These are your quality of life indicators, not some abstract number on a spreadsheet. This is directly from our residents, who feel that Glendale is superb in so many ways. Downtown, Montrose, the way the government is run, the services that we provide, their safety level, their confidence in our public safety departments. This is something that we should all be proud of. And I'm gonna ask the city clerk to maintain a permanent shortcut to this PowerPoint, a permanent shortcut. And perhaps we can run that when a disgruntled resident comes and indicates that so many people are unhappy with Glendale, this department, or that department, or our quality of life, or downtown, or Montrose. We can just flash that on the screen, perhaps after his comments. So we are all reminded as to what our residents think of our city. It's their city, our city, and I'm very proud to be a part of that city.
You know, there's one other indicator that council gets. Nowadays, with social media, we get hundreds of emails a day. And if we do something wrong, or it's written in the press, but they don't like what we're doing, they try to rouse these issues, I can judge also by the number of emails I get, for and against. And when I only get four, five emails out of 194,000 people, I says, okay. And I say, tell people, are you married? Do you have a spouse? Do you agree with your spouse all the time? And every time, people hesitate, no, they don't. So how do you get 194,000-plus people agreeing what the five of us do on every issue? It's impossible. You just try to serve the vast majority, and again, your survey has shown that this council and past councils have been on the right track. So, Mr. Nataro.
I think it does validate our efforts throughout the years, and it also validates the staff's work, because they're ultimately the people that truly interact with the residents. Let me also say, you misspoke. You said five or 10 people that come to the podium and constantly complain. Really, the number is more like two or three.
Yeah, I was being generous.
Lately, it's been two.
And there's none tonight.
Yeah, not so far. But anyway, no, I think the staff has done a great job throughout the years. Glendale is a well-run city, and it's reflected in the people's, the people's opinion about what this city is about.
Yeah, there was one other number I thought was gonna be in the PowerPoint, there wasn't, but it's how many people come downtown and think of a benchmark to look at in the future. It's already, I was blown away by it, which I want to mention, 45% of survey respondents come downtown at least once a week.
Yeah.
That was much higher than I expected, and it'll be interesting to see that number as everything going on downtown.
Just wait till the people start living down here with all the apartments we're building. That'll greatly increase.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, with that Christmas news, what is next?
We need a motion to note and file the report.
Move 8A1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman-
Yes.
Najarian-
Yes.
Nataro-
Yes.
Sinania-
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi, thank you so much. And what is next?
I'm the Director of Public Works regarding the maintenance and operation of the three downtown city-owned parking facilities and the Larry Zarian Transportation Center, and the purchase and installation of a parking access and revenue control system for the city-owned parking facilities and the Civic Center parking facility. He wants a motion directing staff to negotiate with Modern Parking, Inc. for extension of the maintenance and operating contract and the purchase and installation of the parking access and revenue control system. He two's motion directing staff to issue a new request for proposals for maintenance and operation of the facilities and the purchase and installation of the parking access and revenue control system.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Going back five years ago, in 2009, the city went through a procurement process and selected Modern Parking, Inc. to run all of our parking facilities, our structures, and the ZTC. We had a three-year contract with the opportunity for two one-year extensions. We are coming at the end of that. We have the opportunity at this point to either negotiate a new contract or do an RFP, and in the process, secure new funding or at least a new technology, new hardware and equipment. We believe that we can have the contractor do that for us through the terms of this contract. And at this point, given the performance and given the achievement of our contractor, we are recommending that you direct us to extend or renegotiate an extension to the contract that we have and move forward with MPI. Certainly, the council has other options, but that would be the staff recommendation at this time. And if you have any specific questions, Mr. Zurn, Mr. Galanian, Mr. Dombrowski are here.
Okay, I do have three cards.
I have a question.
Mr. Najarian?
So this item is just to begin negotiations. There are no terms and no cost items yet before us at this point. That's all to be-
Determined, correct.
To be determined.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, and I make this recommendation, we make this recommendation based on some preliminary discussions we had, and I'm confident, I'm very confident we can come to a mutually beneficial agreement. But we have not finalized the terms. It would be my hope that in a period of a month, I'd like to be back to you in January with the result of our negotiations and one way or the other, a recommendation on, on either an actual awarding of a contract or extending of the contract, or if for some reason we can't come to an agreement, then proceeding with the RFP. But I'm, I'm very confident, I wouldn't make this recommendation to you unless I was confident that I, I thought we could come to, to a mutually beneficial agreement.
And one of the key terms is regarding the upgrade of the actual hardware and mechanisms, pay points, gates, access points, and the like.
That's correct.
I mean, that's something that, that will be a key component.
The parking access and revenue control equipment.
Okay, let's go to the public. They have three cards. Seth Sherliff, three minutes okay?
Yeah. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Seth Sherliff. I'm a Vice President at Century Control Systems. We have successfully deployed more than 300 automated parking systems in Southern California. In fact, our system and services are used and relied upon at the Americana Air brand, as well as the Pasadena Glendale Burbank Airport. The aging and obsolete system discussed in the staff report for this agenda item absolutely needs, the parking equipment absolutely needs replacement and modernization. The City of Glendale conducted an RFP process that concluded in 2012, and the result of that objective and open process was the selection of our system. The same system currently utilized at the aforementioned locations. We believe recommendation number two for this agenda item should be approved by city council. This approach is the only way you can assure the city and the citizens of Glendale will secure the best value from your parking operator. The City of Glendale has defined through last year's parking system RFP process how it wants to control its parking assets. It is very important you match the appropriate parking operator to the requirements you have already defined. The best way to do this is to an open and fair process. I'm here tonight to support the common sense approach outlined as recommendation number two for this agenda item. To direct staff to issue a new RFP for operating the reference parking facilities and oversee the purchase and installation of the parking system your staff has already selected through the fair and transparent 2012 RFP process. This will assure the City of Glendale selects the best parking operator and equipment to maximize revenue and to facilitate the highest level of customer service. The city and operator should have the flexibility to value engineer the system configuration and capabilities in order to help the city secure a system and operating methodology which adds significant value to the city and its stakeholders.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Greg Spiker, is it?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and city staff. My name's Greg Spiker. I'm with Ken Spiker and Associates. I'm here representing the Los Angeles Parking Association, not here to talk about any particular operator, really just here to talk you about the process. By way of background, we, as an industry, have been the association, and a number of the members that are represented here tonight, parking operators have been part of the process here at the city for the last two years, as your staff indicated. About a year and a half ago, there was a recommendation that came before you to extend the current contract with Modern for one year, and with the clear implication that there was gonna be an RFP process at some point during that one-year extension. And as you know, two months ago, again, staff recommended another one-year extension, which was part of, part of the current contract. And again, with the message to the industry that there was going to be some type of, of, an RFP process going forward. So that's why you've got, you know, the top people in the industry, top companies in the industry, including a company that you currently operate, operate your facilities here, that have spent the time to follow this process and are very much interested in providing the City of Glendale with a competitive proposal. And we really don't see any downside to that for the city. We understand that city staff is happy with the current provider. But the only downside that we can indicate, we can even see is that maybe it will take some time. Your staff indicated in the report it might take six months. I don't see how it could take that long, but maybe if it, if it did, this body would, at the very least, receive proposals from the top companies in the industry, including Modern, and which would help you make the best and most informed decision in terms of how best to serve the City of Glendale and its residents going forward. What we think has changed here from recent, or in the past, is that you now, you're talking about wrapping in the equipment purchase into this as well. And there's a lot of dynamics into that, a lot of new technology that's out there. And so any, any of the, any of these providers would provide you with, with a, you know, the latest and best technology based on the specifications that the city has and the needs that the city has. So we are here tonight as an industry and an association, again, not representing any one particular company, to urge you to strongly consider option two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Last speaker, Robert Hindle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council and staff. My name's Bob Hindle. I'm Vice President with Parking Concepts Incorporated. Parking Concepts has been in business almost 40 years. Over the past 20, 25 years, the company has become really somewhat of a public sector specialist. We do a lot of public sector contracting throughout the state. Personally, that is my responsibility of preparing bids and proposals and negotiating contracts. That's, that's what I do. I've been in the business all my life and have a lot of experience with public sector contracting. My concern, why I'm here this evening, is the process and the possibility of simply negotiating a new five-year contract without the benefit of an RFP process. We have been told, my company has been told in the past by various city attorneys, that you can't do that. That's what they're telling us. Because we've had clients that have wanted to retain us, give us a new term, negotiate a new five-year deal after our primary term expired. City attorneys have said, you cannot do that. You have to go out. It's public contracts, you need a public RFP process. That's what I've been advised. So I'm, I'm just here to encourage you to please consider option two. It would be fair to all parties. It's a typical process for public sector contracting, and it would eliminate any ambiguities or questions or, or issues or public perception. I just would encourage you to be fair to everybody and give everybody a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more cards. Mr. Nataro.
Mr. Weaver, I assume that legally we can extend a existing-
That would be our interpretation, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm not sure what city attorneys the speaker was referring to, but I know- I'm not sure what city attorneys the speaker was referring to, but I know with respect to general law studies, there probably is a requirement, but as a charter city, we have additional discretion and authority to act pursuant to our territory.
And have done that across the board on multiple systems. Now, Century Control, I believe, weren't they also part of the original system that we looked at?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero. The speaker was correct. The previous Traffic and Transportation Administration at a staffing level had conducted a vetting process for that equipment. They did make a, through a committee, a recommendation. That came to me, and it didn't go anywhere from there.
Right, because I believe they were quite a bit higher...
Yes.
Than, yeah, hundreds of thousands of dollars higher.
It's all good equipment and good companies. I just think this is what is in our best interest, and that's what my job is, to do what's in the best interest of the City of Glendale, and that's why we're making this recommendation.
Okay, so I'll go first.
Mr. Quintero. Can I just say, no, there was another card misnumbered, if you want to hear from them first. David Kilfoyle. Sorry, you marked oral communication.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I'm with Standard Parking. I'm a senior vice president. Technology and innovation change the way that we manage parking facilities constantly. Online, electronic, mobile payment systems, remote management, and demand-based pricing are just a few of the examples of the latest trends and technologies that have changed the way we manage parking facilities. An RFP process would assure that the city would have the best operator, the operator that is suited best, to deliver the efficiencies and cost reductions and customer service that are available now and going into the future. The city is about to select a new parking access and revenue control system. This is a significant investment and with long-term effects on the city's ability to take advantage of the new technology that will undoubtedly emerge over the next 10 years. Again, an RFP process will assure that the city has the operator that is best suited to develop the bid specs, to analyze the options and functionality, to evaluate the manufacturer's strengths and weaknesses, to leverage national relationships for best pricing, and to provide the financing for the purchase. The city pays over $1.7 million a year in reimbursements and fees to the parking operator. There's too much at stake with this contract to simply move forward with the status quo. To forego an RFP process at this time would shield the staff from best practices and the opportunity to make certain that they have the most cost-effective operations, that the parking revenues are maximized, and that customer service is the best available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Mr. Quintero.
Okay, so after listening to the different parking companies and this particular operator, we've been with this operator since 2009, and I remember at the time how we went round and round with the RFP and with all of the people that applied, et cetera, et cetera. This company, Modern Parking, was the winner. And what I've noticed in the last five years is the huge improvement in the management of our parking structures. They retained the original employees, just like we insisted, and I think they were retrained. They do an excellent job. They're well-mannered, friendly. The parking structures themselves are much cleaner than they were under previous operators. We've increased our cash flow, and now it's time to bring in a modern electronic system. In my opinion, it's taken us way too long for this to be implemented, and the downside to me is time means money. To go through an RFP, which is going to take, in my estimation, much longer than six months, I'm sure would be at least a year by the time we were ready to go. I'm looking for an electronic system that's the least expensive and does the best job. I'm not looking for a sophisticated system. We need something that's basic and does the job. And from all that I've read, the reports, and talking to the staff, I think the system that they've chosen does just that. And then finally, my experience has been that a small, local company does a much better job than companies that are national and international parking operators. I'm more interested in a locally-based Southern California or even Los Angeles company. I don't know exactly how big they are. I think we're better off with them. I also sit on the airport board and are the airport commission, and we switched operators from one national company to another. I've seen next to no improvement. Our cash flows are not increasing, so I'm satisfied with this company and I'm ready to go with them and let them work it out with the staff. Pick a basic system. I don't think we need a whole lot of bells and whistles, and let's get on with it and let's increase our revenue.
Are you all go?
Question. So let's talk about this, Mr. Zern. What do we lose by negotiating with the current operator? Do we lose price competitiveness in that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, we have a pretty good idea what the market is out there. So we'll know when we reach a point that's beneficial to us or a point that's no longer beneficial to us, and where we might be better suited if we did get competitive. Yes, this wouldn't be competitive, we'd be negotiating with the sole proprietor. But I think that our past experience and what we know goes on out in the world gives us an advantage when we negotiate the contract. We're not going to negotiate a bad deal for the city. That won't happen. I'll come back to you and just tell you, we can't do it, and we're going to have to go in a different direction. But I think what we do do is we're able to expedite getting the new equipment in, we're able to maintain continuity with our service provider. While I would like to hope that we could finish, if we were directed to do an RFP process by the end of the current term, I think Mr. Quintero is probably right. I think this is something that may take longer than six or eight months. So we have the advantage of expediting the process as well. I think, as I've said, is I don't know that we have a lot to lose in this process. We have something to gain, and if it doesn't work for us, we come back to the RFP process.
Okay, so that's my question. What do you do when you're sitting there negotiating with Modern and you feel that you're not getting the best deal you can get for the city and that they've given you their last, best, and final offer? You come back to the council and say, you know what, we're not happy with the latest term, set of terms, let's go for a RFP? Would you feel obligated? Let me ask you this. Would you feel obligated to accept the last, best, and final offer from Modern just to expedite this contract so we don't have to go through the whole RFP again? And we look at you and say, we should have done this the first time I told you, Zern?
Absolutely not. I, again, reiterate, I will do what's in the best interest of the City of Glendale. If I don't think that's in the best interest of the city, I will come back to you and say, I was not able to negotiate that agreement, and we need to go through the formal process.
Now, you particularly, do you have any experience in negotiating these contracts?
I have experience in negotiating several different kinds of contracts with service providers.
Okay, so this is...
Haven't negotiated a parking, but I've negotiated transit, I've negotiated construction, I've negotiated services, engineering, and architectural services.
So you're at home at the negotiation table?
Yes. And Mr. Galanian will also be accompanying me, and I know he has experience in negotiating in his past.
Because these guys are tough. These guys do it all day long, all across the country. I don't want them to say, ah, Steve Zern, we've got him.
Mr. Zern's point is that we are in a position today to drive a premium contract because we know what the market is, and we know that behind door number two is an RFP process. And so if we don't have that confidence and conviction, then we come back to you.
Mr. Senanian.
I'm the guy who always asks for RFPs or at least questions as to why an RFP hasn't happened, and I often get satisfactory response. I'm also the guy who, for the last three months, has been pushing to modernize the equipment to make sure that our revenue generating means are maximized. So I think I'm the one who said, no, I don't want to wait till January. If you can at all possible, please bring it on December 17, which we have, and I greatly appreciate it. And I look forward to, you know, implementing this modern technology that's going to maximize our revenue generation. I've heard the story about how this particular company with whom we have a contract currently has sort of turned the market around, and the city's been making money. And I specifically remember Councilman Najarian even saying at one of the four, you know, last meetings that you had originally voted against it, but you were very satisfied with their performance. And taking that into account, the time sensitivity and the staff's recommendation, and the fact that we really have nothing to lose, because again, if what they're offering to us in negotiating table within a month, you said, is not to our satisfaction that we come back and we'll go into the RFP, so I'm happy with that.
Well, I'll speak if nobody else wants to, now. I will not be supporting, number one, Modern Parking. Not that they haven't done a good job. I can't say that. Everything is relative. But I remember the last time, five years ago, when I wanted to extend the contract then, said, oh, no, we have to go out for an RFP. We got to see what the market will bear. And we ended up doing it, and we switched providers. Now, all of a sudden, we can sit and renew for another five years the same one we've had. Maybe the best, but what the heck is wrong with going out for an RFP and seeing what is out there with all the different providers and what are they handling different? Do they still have the same amount of supervisors on site? How is their system handled? How often are they cleaning? How many workforce are out there? It's been evolving. We don't know what is current. Mr. Zern thinks he knows what is best. We fought over this five years ago, now all of a sudden, we don't need to do it anymore. We can just let Modern go another five years, and another five years, and another five years. I don't care to do that. Mr. Senanian has kept asking for RFPs on everything, and now, so we don't need to do it. I don't get it. And as far as the equipment, I think that the council ought to be seeing competitive bidding on that, too. What system is the best? We don't know. We're saying, Mr. Zern, can figure that out. Maybe can't, but I'm not shirking our responsibility as something that's going to generate millions of dollars to this city. Now, if it goes on six months or a year, what's going to happen? Modern will continue on serving the city, correct? There's not going to be any lapse in time. I mean, the gates are going to be closed, and nobody's going to be able to park there. They're not going to be left open. It'll continue. But why, all of a sudden, we're changing our tune up here and saying, hey, we don't need an RFP now. We know we got the best, and let's stay with them. That may be. But you ought to be willing to go into the market, compete, and show us what you got today in 2013 compared to all the others. Even the industry is saying that. Apparently, we told the industry there will be an RFP. Now, all of a sudden, oh, we don't need an RFP. Sorry, I cannot buy that. Who else wants to speak? Anybody?
Okay, well, the difference for me is that they have been doing a great job. And previous to this operation, they weren't, and the very same people that were operating the parking lots in the past, parking structures in the past, are going to be putting in for RFPs with wonderful descriptions of the wonderful things they're going to do. But anyway, I gave my opinions. I'm ready to make the motion unless there's other comments.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Just a quick comment. I look forward to your support next time when I ask for an RFP on things.
If it's meaningful and legit, yes.
So it's never, all the times I've asked, it's legit?
Yeah, yeah, meaningful. You know, there's circumstances that dictate. It should be, my judgment call, is the times that you've asked, they were not necessary. This is millions of dollars. The circumstances are different. Everyone that comes to us is different.
I've asked on dozens of occasions, Mr. Mayor.
And I disagree with you on dozens of locations. And I disagree with you on this one. You don't want an RFP now, okay? Make the motion.
By the way, my favorite on the airport was when we asked for the RFP and so forth. The staff insisted that the parking company had to have airport experience. So my question was, were they going to be flying planes or not? But they were looking for a national, they were looking for a national company, had to be national. I don't think so. I think local operators are better. Okay, I will move 8B1.
I'll second.
Real call.
Councilmembers, Friedman, sorry.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Senanian.
Yes.
Herr Weaver.
No. Next, please.
C1 is Director of Finance regarding comprehensive annual financial report of the City of Glendale for June 30, 2013. C1's motion accepting comprehensive annual financial report. C2's motion accepting a single audit report.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. It's that special time of year for eggnog, yule logs, and kaffirs. And so we will have Mr. Elliott give you a brief overview of the kaffer for the year that ended June 30, 2013, and also present the single audit report. Bob?
Thanks, Scott. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Scott said, it's that time of year when we get to present the annual financial report to you as a formal submission to comply with our local government rules. Hopefully, you all received this last year. It's hot off the press. It's hundreds of pages of interesting information for your nighttime sleep problems, if you have any.
God, be kidding.
I want to do, do go through the kaffer and give a little background on the process of doing the audit. There's thousands of hours put into producing this document, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank Lilly Fang and the staff who put in many, many evenings working on this document to get it right, and as well as the effort of our auditors, McGladrey. I wanted to go through the timeline of how that works, discuss the management letter, which is basically our report card and what we get in the single audit. The single audit is another document that we get that's submitted to the federal government for our grant compliance, for all the federal grants we get. And then give you a little overview on some of the GASBs, the Governmental Accounting Standard Board changes, because it does impact on how we present things. As you know, not that a lot of people would probably read this book, but it is a very important document for folks that use this information, primarily bond rating agencies and others that evaluate the city in terms of how our finances are doing. It's posted on the website now for anybody to look at, and I can guarantee you, those that we talk to that do read it, they get down to the nitty-gritty on the detail. As you recall, as in the past, we have auditors come in for their preliminary work in June of every year. There's always been comments in the past about why does it take so long to get an annual report out, and this is basically the reason. There's a long process that we go through the summer into the fall where we go through all the different funds, the 60-plus different funds that we have, which are all separate sets of books, and close that, and then get a financial statement ready for the auditors to look at. They basically come on site sometime in September and have pretty much been camped in our small conference room up until last week when we get the audit report opinion where we get to then send the book to print. And again, it's a long process that they have to go through, a lot of review, and not only in the local office but in their national office to make sure that we have a document that follows all the rules. We then get the opinion letter, which is basically the report of the finances, and we bring it to you in late December every year. Just a little bit about the report and the kaffer and how it's structured. It's basically a top-down document where it has a lot of overview at the beginning. It has a transmittal letter, which basically gives kind of a facts and figures of the city, has organizational profile of the city in terms of org chart. It gets into the financial section that has all the details, and it's, again, a top-down type of report where we have an executive summary and a lot of highlights of what happened in terms of differences throughout the year. We have all our bond ratings, information about PERS, and so on and so forth. Within the financial statement itself, there's a government-wide... Within the financial statement itself, there's a government-wide statement, and that basically shows you the organization taken as a whole in the corporate world is basically a consolidated statement. We put everything together, put it into two different categories, the government side and the business side. And the business-type funds are all your proprietary water and power sewer and so forth, so forth. And then it breaks down. We have all the different information for major funds. Those are the larger funds like GWP Electric and the General Fund. And then we have a fiduciary fund now. That's where the Glendale Accessory Agency resides. And then all the lesser, smaller funds, we lump in what's called non-major funds. And then we have our internal service funds where we account for our insurance, our fleet, so on and so forth, those types of activities that we have in-house. And last but not least, in the, in the back of the kaffir are 21 different schedules that have all sorts of information divided up in five categories, and I'll go through that briefly in a minute. Just to give a little overview on our government-wide statements in terms of our statement of net position, also known in common terms as a balance sheet, where our assets and liabilities are, our net assets, given everything taken into account, is $1.6 billion. That came through all the different government charges and expenditures, as well as all the business activities, i.e. the enterprise funds like water and power and sewer. And these were the results within those categories. We had a little bit of a loss for the year, but still relatively the same in terms of where we at is $1.6 billion in terms of what our total net assets are. And this number's important, and I'll get to that in a minute, why this number will probably be reduced in the future for something that we have new rules coming onboard. Financial trends are statistical section in the back are broken out into these major categories, and they include everything from large electrical customers for the utility, the top 10 property taxpayers. There's trend analysis in our, for financial information, has staffing levels, and all for, many of these have up to 10 years' worth of data included, all sorts of, you know, number of police cars, acres of open space. There's a tremendous amount of information in these statistical sections, and we get assistance from all the departments to put that information together. The results of the audit, we get the independent auditor's report. This year again, we got the unmodified opinion, or the highest type of opinion you can receive from an audit firm, which is always good news. The bad news is, we got a little bit of a ding on our report card in terms of our single audit report, and I'll get into the details. What they found, and it goes back to some land we purchased as a result of the 2005 landslides, there was five properties that we bought. In the process, assets like that that are devalued during the process, which they were, we should have written them down during that process. We did not. So we took a loss when we sold them and auctioned them off this year. There's really no net effect, and the auditor-
Took the loss when we sold them, as opposed to taking the loss early on when we wrote them down.
And it's, if you recall, the entity-wide level, the highest level, there was actually no, not even an adjustment recommended. So we have put, we concurred with the auditor's recommendation on that. We've already put some processes in place to prevent that. We've had discussions with city attorney on how we can review all this and so that doesn't happen again. Typically, this type of process is applied to machinery or equipment like at the utility where AQMD rules may impinge what the output is, and then we have to devalue an asset. But we didn't apply it to this land and the landslides. The other note on compliance was, we didn't, CDBG staff did not report some data timely, so that was noted as we have to for the single audit report. And they have put measures in place to prevent that in the future as well. I mentioned earlier, GASB. GASB is the rule-setting body. I was talking with the folks this afternoon, 10 years ago, it's been 10 years since GASB 34 came out, which basically rewrote the entire playing field on how we report things. And within 10 years, they've produced, doubled the number of pronouncements that we've had to follow. It took them 35 years or 40 years to get to 34 pronouncements, and they've pretty much doubled it in the last 10. So every year, we have a lot of different rules, changes, just some minor things this year where it used to be where we had our balance sheet where we used to call it net assets, it's now net position, and minor stuff like that. We also now write off cost of issuance and debt instead of amortizing that over the course of the bond issue. Not a big deal, so we went back and restated those moving forward. I think one of the largest things, and I wanted to mention this because it's coming up and we will have to change how we, how we report our pension information, actually it will create more layers of how we report our pension information. And as you know, we have a lot of information. I think it's on page 99 that shows three-year information of our pension system, PERS, broken down into miscellaneous and safety, what the assets are, what the liabilities are. We've often been criticized for the amount of the liability involved. This will exacerbate that when we start reporting. What GASB is wanting us to do is create, look at the liability with a different discount rate, meaning it would be at a AAA bond rating or higher versus what PERS uses as a 7.5% expected return. The difference being, if we use perhaps a 5.5% or 6% discount rate, our pension liability will be ballooned much higher than it is now. And then we have to book that at the entity-wide level. So that $1.6 billion that we have in net position or net assets today will be reduced. Is it meaningful? I don't know. We'll wait and see when we get through that. The bad news for us is, we have to hire additional actuaries to go through and do that valuation. Actually, PERS will offer to do it, but they'll charge us for it, which we'll probably end up doing as we move forward to comply with this reporting.
Mr. Elliott, who's gonna review these up in Sacramento?
Well, PERS will produce this information for us, and then they'll give it to us in their annual report, and then we'll book that difference. They'll value our pension liability at the 7.5% expected rate of return, and then a lower expected rate of return, whatever that is. Now oddly enough, it was kicking around today, I can recall when AA or higher bond rates were higher than 7.5%. So I think this thing might, I'm not sure everybody thought this through when they decided to use a different discount rate, because this will, right now, would be lower than 7.5%. So it will be, it will have a big impact on how we move forward with how we look at the pensions. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because it, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be a big outcry of how big the pension liability is.
That's true for every city in the state, right?
Correct. And the reality is, we take the rates that PERS gives us. We pay those rates every year. We pay 100% of those rates. PERS deals with all the machinations of the actuarial and all that good stuff, and they produce those rates for us. So we have not funded, we have not, not funded our rates every year. So it's, I'm not sure what this is gonna give us long-term, but we'll have to wait and see how it comes out. Anyway, I'd like to introduce Jeff Alchuler, the partner from McGlady, and Peter George, the director, who was on-site a lot of the audit to come up and answer any questions you may have or make some comments about this year's process.
Did you two live there again? Did you live there again?
There were times.
There were times. People, people at home just don't realize how much goes into this.
That's true, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You can have it.
Council members, for us to present tonight. Bob did a pretty good job presenting the overview of the, of the process we went through. I just wanted to maybe just go into a little bit more detail as to what we actually do in those different parts of the process. As Bob mentioned, we do come out in June for about two weeks to actually go through the key internal controls that does impact the information that does go into this document. As Bob mentioned, it's a 200-page report that is primarily management's responsibility put together. Our responsibility as your external auditors is basically to make sure that the information is reasonably accurate based on the procedures we will perform. So for us to tailor those procedures, we do come out in June for about two weeks and go through all those key internal controls. So we start with the overview of the city. How does each department work with each other? How does they work with finance? How does they report to council? And based on that overview, if we feel that there's sound controls in place and they're designed and operated the way they should, then we can go into more detail of some of the major transaction cycles. So for example, your budgeting process, your revenue process, specialty utility billing, payroll process, procurement, disbursements, collections, risk management, the investment, cash, the debt. We look at all those transaction cycles and get a key understanding of all the key controls. So who authorizes what? Who approves what? How is things recorded? And then once we have gained that understanding, if we want to reduce risk, we will actually test a sample of those transactions to make sure that those controls are working as they should. We haven't noted anything of matters that would impact adversely our audit. So then we come back out in middle of September, once the city has a chance to close its books, work with all the different consultants and actuaries to get all the information that goes into this document. And then we need about two months to go through that process, and we look at all the key accounts and funds, as Bob mentioned, so cash investments, you know, we spend a lot of time testing the existence, testing the valuation of those investments. We look at the receivables, the revenue, again, for all the different funds, the inter-fund transactions, capital assets, which is one of the largest sections of your financial statements. Go to the liability section, we look at the accounts payables, we look at accrued liabilities, we look at the debt. There's a lot of procedures we perform to test, again, completeness, existence, and so forth. And then getting into all the expense accounts and then the cash flow statements and so forth. So get through that process. The kaffir is produced by the accounting department, and then we go through that page by page with everybody to make sure that all the disclosures are what they should be. And there's a couple of checklists that are a couple hundred pages in themselves with all the different GASBs that Bob alluded to. So it's a pretty time-involved process. I know staff's put a couple hundred, you know, maybe 1,000-plus hours. We put in over 1,000 hours as part of the audit itself.
1,000 hours?
Over 1,000, yeah. So as, we're on-site for about two and a half months on, at the end, we're on here for two weeks. So I do want to thank everybody as far as Bob and Lilly's group and all the folks in accounting from GWP on down to the finance department for all their efforts in putting this. Everybody just put a lot of late nights and so forth, so I want to extend my appreciation to them.
I got a question. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. You've done this a few years now for us, right?
Exactly.
Bob's and his troops have been at it for a few years now. Can you discern if there's any better efficiency of operation? You get the same conclusions, we're doing great, but the efficiency and the organization, you see change, improvement or anything, or is it, we're maintaining the same level? I don't mean to put anybody on the spot. You understand what I'm, what I'm saying?
There's always room for improvement on efficiency. I would move it that.
But increasingly, each year, you see a little here, a little there, that things are moving a little smoother?
Right, no, we do see that, and this was one of, actually one of what we're challenging here, because as Bob mentioned, there's now 71 standards out there that basically apply to governments, and five of those standards were implemented this fiscal year. So, you know, when you talk to the finance folks, you don't have to explain to them what those standards are. They already have a pretty good understanding. So it's, it's working closely to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as this is how it's gonna be presented, this is how things should be recorded now. So it's not a lot of education as far as we have to explain to them what things are supposed to be. It's a lot of interactive, so forth. So compared to other entities that we see, you know, I can't say that's the same for everybody, you know, it just depends on each person's responsibility and their accountability to the organization and to what they do. So I can say that this team that we work with here, and we have to keep a professional skepticism over management because we have to maintain that independence, but I can say that, you know, they do take pride in what they do and they do take ownership of what they do. So it's a job a lot easier when we have to, somebody who's, we can kind of speak on the same level with.
I hope I take that as a plus. And your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If there's any questions, maybe just one thing on the single audit report, we didn't really talk about that, but this really speaks to the compliance we perform over the city's federal grants process. The city had just under $49 million of expenditures in federal grants this past year, and we go through a process to pick what number of grants and what type of grants we're gonna look at. The city is a low-risk audit, so we're required by OMB Circular A133 to only look at a minimum of 25% of your total expenditures. This year, we looked at about $34 million of the $49 million, so a little over 50%, 55%. And we selected three grants, the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program, which is the biggest ones. We looked at the home program, we looked at the CDBG program. That was that funding we mentioned earlier. So we look at every year on a rotating basis, different ones, but we try to always hit the big ones on a repeating basis. So other than that, there was really no other non-compliance noted. Everything is being expended the way that the grants that were funding these are intended to be, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, not. Everybody's happy.
Thank you.
Except the critics that aren't here tonight. They'll be here January 21st.
Appreciate serving the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a nice trip back, wherever you're going. Into the snow? Are you, you know?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry. What is next, please?
In the motion.
Motion, yes.
I'll move the item.
Second.
It's C1 and 2.
Wait, C1 and 2.
I will move C1 and 2.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Air Weaver.
All right. Thank you, staff, for the job you did, too. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming down again. Okay, you can all leave except for Bob Elliott. You gonna stick around, Bob? Can't get away. Okay, what is, what is next, please?
Next item is 8D, and this is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Design-Built Contract for the Adams Hill Water Main Replacement Project. I should note that this item, as it is listed incorrectly, describes the action as a motion authorizing the award of the design-build contract. The actual item is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and awarding the contract. The correct resolution is in the packet, and on the staff report is a resolution authorizing the award of the design-build contract to JD Sugeo Construction, Inc., in the amount of $2,356,000 and contingency of 15%.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. A very exciting opportunity for us here, capitalizing on the promise of doing major capital improvement in the Adams Hill area, which we have before you, is the consideration of design-build contract for the, as I say, much anticipated Adams Hill Water Main Project. I'll defer to Mr. Zern to walk you through the details, but it's something that the council had promised two years ago, and we are delivering now. So Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
This is longer stuff, because I just wanted to ask Margaret Hammond, how much detail do you want, Margaret? You're satisfied? Okay. Now, there's no card yet, so, okay, you can do as brief as you want.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Blagg, our Chief Assistant General Manager for Water and Electric, to come up and give you a very brief overview of what this project entails. It's a good project, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, it's something we've wanted to do for some time.
It's about time.
Yeah, it's long overdue. And then Mr. Blagg and his staff did yeoman's work in negotiating this agreement and going through the RFQ and RFP process to get us to where we're at. This is a good firm. We've worked with them before, and we're confident that this project's gonna turn out just, just fine.
Sure as well.
Mr. Blagg?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you just a short overview of what, what the project's about. Ramona Blagg, Chief Assistant General Manager. Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the council. So what this is, the goal of the project, why are we doing the project? Because mainly, the pipes are undersized, they're deteriorated, and the far flow and the hydrant for firefighting, they need to be improved. Those are the top two priorities. We need to put additional fire hydrants. And in this neighborhood, there's a lot, not a lot, there are a few main lines that are running through the backyard. In order to access to the water meter, they actually have to get easement from other neighbors to get to their meter. So we want to eliminate those. So you probably have seen these pictures before, that term tuberculosis related, but this is the condition of some of the pipes in Adams Hill, the four-inch.
You're kidding.
Yeah.
What capacity does that four-inch unlined on the cast iron have now?
The pressure is very low in certain areas.
It's like there's no pressure?
Well, the water's still flowing, but it's limited. And so what you will see is basically it gets replaced with the line. So there's about 7,080 feet of new water main. We're going to install new water valves, install new fire hydrants, and this is not coming out as clear, but what you see on the red here is where the new pipes will be going in. And the others that are not highlighted means they already have the new pipes. And that's where the replacement is. And these are the areas where we need to put some new pipes in order for the services to not come from the backyard.
Do they all come off Adams?
Pardon me?
They all feed off of Adams?
That's correct. And so, at the end, these are the benefits. The water flow will, will improve, the water pressure will definitely improve, water quality will not be an issue, reliability will be much better. Again, the intended result of improving fire protection and to remove all those unnecessary pipes that go through other properties' backyard. So, I know it's short, concise.
Timeline. Timeline.
Timeline. We hope to get this done in about 12 months, about a year.
So, we're awarding it, so by December next year, it'll all be in?
That's correct. A fully tested commission.
I just want to make sure Adams Hill hears all that. They'll have all this water line. Will that complete Adams Hill in terms of water lines in the whole Adams Hill area?
That's correct.
Two more to do there.
And what's important, too, before we start the project, we'll have community meetings so they understand the impact. Bear in mind, the traffic in this area during construction will be severely impacted. So, we will schedule community meetings.
Sure you handle that, because we don't want people here, including that lady there, talking about the neighbors can't get into their garages, et cetera, et cetera. It's your problem to handle.
Yeah, we'll hope to mitigate those as the project progresses.
Okay. Thank you very much. There's a motion.
It's a resolution.
Has questions. Mr. Sinanian?
Question. So, this, this project has two components. One is the design, and the second is the construction. And the design, for the design component of it, there has been an RFP, and we have, we're basically recommending, the staff is recommending to the council that the winner of that RFP win the whole thing, right? Am I understanding this correctly?
It's the same company doing the design and construction.
It's a design build.
Design build.
Right. And the reason we're doing this in answer to Mr. Weaver's question, more clarification, is with the design build, they can start their construction before they even get to 100% completion of the design. So, at around 50%, 60%, we can start doing the construction.
Gain a lot of time.
Okay, so, I'm just, I'm just literally reading here. So, this is the design component RFP applied to, but it, I guess it makes sense to go ahead and give the design, the entire contract, which is design build, to this entity?
Yes. The way the design build contract works, we've done this on the electric a few times, is basically, we're relying on a company that provides both. And so, what we look at is, we look at the rates, and they give us basically a price for both design and construction. We give them the basic parameters for what we're expecting, minus the details on the design, meaning the depth, how much concrete they need to put back, and so forth.
Design build is a common use in the construction industry.
I get that, I understand. But, but, what I'm, the report specifically states that the RFP was conducted for the design aspect.
No, it's for both.
So, what are we dispensing?
Let me, let me explain. Sorry, there's a little bit of confusion. The, the reason that we're dispensing with competitive bidding is because the construction component isn't being, wasn't bid out to the lowest responsible bidder. It was done through an RFP to combine both processes. And for that reason, our charter requires us to dispense with competitive bidding, because the, the design-build concept, which is a very useful tool in this type of project, is not specifically allowed in our charter, in these circumstances. And so, that's why we did it in this fashion.
Okay, so, we're complying with the charter, and we've done an RFP?
Correct. And I, the proposer, the proposer that's being recommended by staff, it was the lowest proposer on the concept.
Right, that's right. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your explanation.
Okay, thank you, sir.
8D1.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
N'jarion.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda at 8E is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding adjustment of water rates to correct errors made in calculation of water rates in April 2012. E1 is resolution affirming the Glendale Water and Power Department General Manager's determination to administrably suspend fire line charges for fire lines four inches and greater in size commencing January 1, 2014, pending the recalc- recalculation and implementation of the city's water rates and charges, inclusive of the fire line charges, and directing staff to prepare further analysis on GWP's water rate structure.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. From the sublime to the ridiculous, unfortunately, we move to bring forward an issue that we were asking. Specifically, the action is that you allow or affirm Mr. Zern his not only avoiding an increase in fire line rates for those fire meters above four-inch-sized lines, but also to allow us to zero them out, as we have determined that there are problems with the rate structure. Going back in time, in 2011, it was determined that GWP Water had a problem with respect to its revenue, and that the rate model was old, conservation had reduced the revenues that were coming into the utility, and the utility continued to build out water infrastructure despite operating at a deficit. This created a deficit situation with GWP Water borrowing money from GWP Electric. The city, at that point, moved forward with a cost-of-service analysis with an outside contractor, Willdan, because we did not have that expertise in-house. And so, we completed an RFP process, selected Willdan, had them come in, and pursuant to Prop 26, completed Cost of Service Analysis, or COSA. This COSA was used to establish a new rate structure that focused on commodity, water commodity tiers. So, the more you used, the more expensive it became. And also, to a larger degree than what had been done in the past, decouple the commodity charges from the fixed charges, because we needed that elasticity to allow the utility to generate enough revenue to operate despite ongoing conservation efforts. That was vetted through Willdan and through GWP management during the, at the end of 2011. And by early 2012, you recall, we moved forward, we were trying to move forward with a rate plan. Unfortunately, and in a short-sighted manner, the utility had done the outreach during the holidays, the Chamber of Commerce representing business interests that were going to be severely impacted by the fire line fees that were being increased dramatically to accommodate for those fixed charges, decried the effort. I was brand-new into the city, and recommended to you at that time that, in the interest of good offices and good faith with the people being most directly impacted, that we pushed the consideration of the rate plan back from January, late January, into the springtime. That happened. We did do additional outreach, albeit, folks were still upset, but at least they understood what the rate plan was intending to accomplish. So, by the springtime, by March, the council had approved the rates. By April, they were in place. And by the summer months, we began to see the impact. Over the course of the subsequent rating, or rate billing periods, our GWP staff began to realize that their revenue was coming in not in the way that it was modeled. In fact, we heard complaints from our businesses, as anticipated, because the, the fire line fees were generating a great deal of hardship on them. And ironically enough, we didn't hear very many complaints from any of, especially the residential users, and some of the smaller, generally, individually smaller users of, of our water service. And we just could not figure that out. Well, by the end of 2012, our staff had begun to realize what was going on. Although we were selling more water, that was masquerading the problem that we had with the model. By the spring of 2013, of this year, we had come to understand that the water tiers that had been in place were completely off. As you know, we bill on a bimonthly basis, every two months. And apparently, our consultant, Willdan, had set the tiers structure up on a two-month basis. Unfortunately for them, and for us, we reset the rates every 30 days to allow somebody who, for example, might be filling their pool in the first part of July, not to be penalized by being in those higher tiers through the rest of that billing period. What that means is that customers were never really reaching the second, third, fourth, fifth tiers. And in reality, at the end of the day, the head-slapping, ridiculous mistake made by Willdan is that they did not divide by two when establishing those rates. This should have been caught by Willdan in the validation testing of the rate plan. That was not done. That was something that, at this point, is very certain by all parties. The second half of this is that the, we were generating too much money from the fire line fees, and come to find out, as we were investigating this problem, we had more fire lines than we had fire meters. Not every meter had a line associated to it. What that means is that the universe of customers for that fixed fee, that fixed amount of revenue that was needed, rather, it was artificially small. We were charging 300 people what we should have been charging 1,200 people. So, when we fully understood, or at least thought we understood what the problem was, we approached Willdan, as you might expect, and asked them to take ownership, responsibility for this problem. They have since offered to redo the cost-of-service analysis, presumably correctly this time, and reimburse the city for the Prop 218 noticing costs. However, they would not reimburse the city for the costs of the revenue that was lost by underbilling the vast majority of our customers and overbilling the very small minority of our customers. So, at this point, their solution was to rather insert what they called an adder, that would allow us to go back and bill customers for that which they had already used. Staff acting on council's behalf had told them that was absolutely unacceptable, and they needed to try better. They have since not come up with anything else. So, at this point, we are exploring our legal, our legal remedies in dealing with this consultant. But, we still have to solve the problem. And so, in solving the problem, what we are doing, what we had been doing, is trying to fix this cost-of-service analysis, and try to align the tiers to what they ought to be, based on those, the 30-day usage cycles versus the 60-day billing cycles, and understand what the true universe of fire line customers really is. What we have come to find out, in bringing in a new consultant that we have vetted, that is doing, started out doing forensic work for us to understand what Willdan had gotten wrong, this consultant, Bartle Wells, has indicated that it's essentially putting lipstick on a pig, and that the COSA is hopelessly flawed. And so, that we are better off simply throwing out Willdan's work, dealing with them in a separate realm, in a separate arena, and then moving forward with a new rate plan. So, what we are doing now, in terms of going forward, as we explore all of our remedies with Willdan, is to prepare a new cost-of-service analysis that we would introduce to the community and to the council in the spring of 2014, do the Prop 218 required notice, and bring back before you a new rate plan later on in the spring, and tie it into the budget so that it is in place by July 1. The net impact, as it relates to this particular action, is that, borrowing from the Hippocratic Oath, we are hoping to do no harm going forward. And we are looking, knowing that we are overbilling or had overbilled these customers, these fire line customers, asking that we just zero out their fire line costs for those lines over, service lines over four inches. Now, why service lines over four inches? Well, because Willdan erroneously left out the service lines less than two inches, or less than, than four inches, the two and three-inch lines. So, there is a host of problems that exist in their model. We are simply throwing their model out and restarting this entire process. We do sincerely apologize. Mr. Zern and I will be making contact with all of our large-volume users that were subject to, subjected to the fire line fees. And we will be putting forth a public outreach campaign, very similar to what we did on the electric rate plan, as we did earlier this year. And further, we, you can rest assured that, instead of allowing a consultant to do entirely this work and work in a vacuum, his staff will be looking over their shoulder, I'll be looking over his, internal audit will be looking over mine to ensure and hopefully restore confidence to all of our customers that we truly are that trusted utility. So, with that very humbling overview of where we have been, and where we are, and where we hope to go, we would ask for you to affirm this decision from the GWP General Manager, and we can answer any questions you might have.
I just want to make the comment upfront, and quickly in the discussion, that this problem issue predates Mr. Zern and Mr. Ochoa. Neither of these gentlemen are directly responsible for what we're having to go through.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Freeman.
Let me say that I fully support the recommendation that we don't go back and bill those who are underbilled. There's no way I would support that. I mean, if people have a windfall because we didn't get the rate right, then they should be able to, that's the way it should be. There's no way I would support going back and trying to bill people because of our mistake. And I also support stopping the billing on those businesses who are overpaying immediately and getting this right. And this is, you know, Willdan has a great reputation out there in the community, and I think they should own up 100% to the mistake that they made and make this right. I think it's the only way to protect their reputation.
Mr. Sinanian.
I also think it'd be unconscionable to go back and, and charge those residents, the residentials who have been underbilled, just because it's not their fault, and it's been a very long period of time. And I also believe that we should go after Willdan, and they should own up to their, to their mistake. I, I do want to know, though, what is, what's the maximum amount that we can possibly recover from Willdan?
I would defer to city attorney, but our, our preliminary view of their insurance would be, I think, they have an errors and omissions of $2 million.
$2 million.
If I, if I may, let me just clarify that. That's just what their policy, they, we believe that they're responsible legally for all the short revenue, up to the point where we have to fix it going forward, which occurs at a certain point in time. So, that'd be more, significantly more than $2 million. We're still kind of working through those numbers. And I just want to address that issue of the, sort of the adder, or the going back and charging, while legally, that, that's an option. And everybody here, from the staff's view, feels that that's not necessary or appropriate. And I just want to say legally, it's something that we'll be addressing, that that's not necessary for the city in order to mitigate its damages. The only thing that we have to do going forward is make sure that we fix it going forward. We don't have an obligation legally to go back and make that. That's sort of the pitch that's been thrown to us, and we'll be addressing that with Willdan.
Okay, so, my, my concern is, just going forward, one thing to consider is, I know we have a new consultant, and I'm not necessarily pointing to this particular consultant, but in the future, just to consider that maybe we should look for consultants that have higher insurance policies. I mean, just something to keep in the back of our minds. I mean, who's going to really anticipate a problem this magnitude? But just in case we do, it's good to have a, a bigger cushion. Secondly, so, what happens with those that have, in the past, been underbilled? Now, we have to up their, I mean, they have to pay what they own up. But we want, no, until COSA's updated.
That's correct. That's correct.
And before then, we're going to keep the, the commercial, those that have been overbilled, we're going to keep them to zero?
The fire line customers would be held to zero, and we would just basically credit them.
Okay, well, I, you know, again, this problem arose before the current city manager and Mr. Zern were on the job. So, I think it, we should, that should be pointed out clearly. But I, I have to say that I'm, you know, this is, you know, the, the past, I mean, someone dropped the ball. It's very, very concerning. I'm, you know, you know, anyway, like, like our city manager said, there's going to be levels of oversight from now on, so that we make sure that a simple problem like the rate being divided by two doesn't slip through the cracks. And, yeah, go after Willdan. They need to own up to their problem.
Okay, I do have one late card. Raj Karapadia, two minutes?
Thank you very much. I'm addressing you as a business owner and a resident, not in my capacity with any other organization. So, I just want to first clarify that. As a business owner and a resident, I'm a little bit curious, because I'm trying to get a clarification in my mind, reading the report and hearing what was presented. I didn't hear a shortfall of $8 million being mentioned. I want to get a clarification. Is there shortfall of $8 million in revenue as a result of this mistake? And also, to express that I agree that those in the businesses that have fire meters and fire lines should not be penalized by continuing to bill them the extra amount. So, we hope, I would urge you to freeze the level so that they recover the extra amount that they've been billed. Thank you very much.
Okay. No more cards. Is there a motion, 8E1?
I'll move.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, who made the motion, and who seconded it?
Quintero N'jarion.
Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I do have to point out that there was a one card submitted.
Roll call. He just walked in the door. Council started at 6:00.
I understand, it's my obligation.
I ask for roll call.
My obligation and duty to inform you that there was a card submitted.
After I ask for a After I asked for a roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Ananya.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Okay, next, please.
Next item on the agenda is oral communication. Discussion is limited. It is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
First speaker, Nick Franklin.
I came to say-
Name for the record.
I apologize. I'm Nick Franklin.
Okay, thank you.
I came to say thank you because they finished the crosswalk very nicely at Cedar Street in Wilson. I was hoping that they could put in flashing lights system, but it was explained to me that it did not meet the code qualification for that. So I just wanted to ask one more thing, possibly. Could there be maybe some reflectors for nighttime put somewhere in the crosswalk area?
I can say that staff has taken note of it, and they'll react like they did the last time to the crossing. That's all I can tell you at this time. But so noted, okay?
But as I said, I just really wanted to say thank you for that, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening. Margaret Hammond, followed by Judge Carapetian, again, right? Okay, you're next.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the council, city staff. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I know from what I've been hearing that you'd probably much rather drag me out and burn me in Partridge Square than listen to me. But that's kind of the feeling that you get when you come here. Anyway, as a citizen, I think I have a right to come, and I will continue to come. One of my things that we do have to be very grateful for is the bulky, free bulky trash pickup. It's going to be very important during the next few weeks because of all the entertainment and extra trash and whatever. The number being 818-548-3916. Please call when you have huge amounts of furniture and stuff that you're leaving around, especially over the first of the year. The other thing is, the Rose, what was it, the Rose Foundation, I think they ought to be using for a logo, rose-colored glasses. Now, what part of the population of Glendale did they take that, did they ask these questions or whatever that they came forward with the answers? 400 people out of 200,000? And where did those people live? What part of Glendale? Were they all above North Glendale, up in the hills up there, where they don't have to face reality of traffic or whatever? I'd like to know that. It's very interesting to come forward and say, oh, this is marvelous. But where, let's face it, 400 people are nothing in this city. You know, there are other people that would have different opinions. Particularly, you know what he brought up and never mentioned, that 49% was dissatisfied with the traffic situation. 49%. That little pie shape, that was something that wasn't mentioned.
Margaret, hold the music for a second. Mr. City clerk.
All right.
Yeah. The question is, this was an action item.
Right.
And why didn't you speak at that time? Because this is oral communication. The item's not on the agenda. I don't mind.
All right, forget it.
I just, I mean, I don't mind either, but I'm-
I didn't at that time because I hadn't heard the report. I didn't hear it until it was there, and by then, of course, the cards were in for whatever. So, but that's all right. Forget it, as usual.
Oh, no.
It's okay.
I'm okay. I didn't stop.
It's okay. Let's move on.
Start the clock.
Thank you. There are good things in the city, and some things that we need to look at. The YWCA has a program for women veterans, and a young lady, the daughter of an ex-mayor, Rajio, is in charge of that program. And if you would like to donate money to that program to help those, there's about 200 women veterans that need help. And the address for the YW is 735 East Lexington. And then, you know, the homeless opened up the 1st of December, and I don't know how many of you have gone down there. I went down to take some sheets and pillows and whatever, warm jackets. As it happened, it was a very nice, it was a warmer day, but the people were already lined up at 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon to try to get into that shelter. So just keep in your mind that there are people who do need help in our city, and we all have so much, all of us here in this room, to be grateful for, and we have more than enough to make us happy and so forth. And I do think that, you know, maybe it would be a great idea. The other thing is that Glendale Historical Society is going to be having, the doctor's house will be open for the candlelight tours, again, this Saturday evening, and from 6:30 to 8:30. There's punch, hot chocolate, coffee, homemade cookies by the tons, and we are also going to have wonderful little, down to this size, from the Pasadena Conservatory of Music. They're violinists, and it's just something to hear them. They're marvelous and very, to enjoy it. And bring your families. The children love it. They love the cookies. And are taken by the beautiful Victoria tree, Victorian-styled decorated tree. So there are lots of great things in Glendale. I have always said that. I wouldn't have properties that I have here in Glendale if I didn't feel that way. I would have purchased elsewhere. But no, I always felt it was a good place, stable, safe, and with great schools, and a lot to be grateful for, that other cities, people coming to the tours are from all over California, not just our city. And so often, when they talk to me, they say how much they like Glendale. And even some new, young couples that have come to the thing, they have just moved in on Grandview, are just blown away. They said, oh, we just love it. They're just a young couple in their 20s, and they just think it's a marvelous place to live. So I'm not disagreeing with the rose-colored glasses, but I'm just saying I think it should be a little different, spread out from wherever you got your information, they got their information. Have a good Christmas and New Year's.
Thanks for the comments, Margaret. It's nice to hear. Mr. Quintero.
I always knew you were a happy camper, Margaret. Margaret, there is no question, this is a professional company working with a university of social science division of that university, so there is no question that that survey represented from south to north, like it did demographically, different ages and ethnic groups, et cetera. So it is a scientific poll.
Okay, Judge Carapetian, followed by Anahit Melconian.
Hello. Mr. Mayor and council members, the Glendale News Press decision to include questions related to Police Chief DePampa's retirement dinner in the article about the city's expenditure of $61,000 on President Obama's visit to a Glendale-based business has attracted attention to who paid for the retirement dinner. I hope the city council or management will publicize information on the cost of the dinner and who paid for it. Thank you.
I think we can answer that now, correct?
It's not public information, is it?
It's not the city.
It was the Police Foundation and the people that bought the tickets. Yeah, so.
Just for the record, Dreamworks being in Glendale provides property tax in the neighborhood of $200,000 a year, $125,000 to the general fund, and the remainder from other sources. So I think they're pairing a fair share into the city. Any city in the nation would love to have Dreamworks in their city, and we're very fortunate to have them here.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to be clear, since it was brought up, because other people may have the same question, the taxpayers didn't pay for Chief DePampa's retirement. The city didn't pay for it. It was paid for by the tickets of the people who went and the Police Foundation, which raises money for its own causes.
Thank you. Okay, Anahit Melconian.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Dave Weaver, staff and audience. This is my very first time to be here. I apologize if I do something wrong. Excuse me.
Oh, you're not doing anything.
Yeah, I have been a Glendale resident over 15 years, from the day one I entered the United States. And for your information, I have been outstanding Glendale resident by volunteering for VIRA program, volunteer income tax assistant for over 10 years. Having the first aid training, I saved my neighbor's child's life back in August 2007 while other neighbors were looking and not even calling 911. I have been volunteering at Burbank Temporary Aid Center, where I prepare sandwiches for homeless people with my hands, and with my smile, I gave it away. Today, I am here regarding a non-conforming condition of my property. I am a first-time home buyer. I purchased my property back in August 2007, and it was sold by the homeowner. I did not have any agent to buy the property. So I did my homework. I came to the city. I pulled the records, and according to the inspector who did the private inspection of the house, he did not find any violations or anything wrong with my property. But because back in April 2011, my neighbor filed a complaint that there is illegal construction on my property, so the inspector showed up at my property, to my surprise. I was very surprised because that neighbor had access to my property even when they knew the former, former owner of the property. They had their property since 1998, and know, they know completely about the condition of my current property. So they uphold that information, that there are illegal constructions like the patio that I am informed by the city. They just found the right time for them, that is convenient for them, and then complained. Inspector Thomas Solar appeared at my property, and this is how he talked to me. There are, the patio that you have doesn't have a permit. You are going to hate me because I'm going to tell you that the windows installed front dwelling do not have permit. You are going to kick me out because I'm going to tell you your AC on the rooftop does not have a permit. I did my research. I went to LA County Assessors' Office, and I found the records that this patio was built back in 1943, and the inspection was done by the city in 1952. If in 1952, the inspector missed the property, the patio built there, I want to understand why I have to be responsible for something that was built in 1943. Now we are in 2013. And I actively have been working with Renes Sada, with John Brownell. Back in June 2011, I had a meeting with Rafi Manugyan, who was one of the council members at that time. I had a meeting, Renes Sada, Christine Babumian Powers. At that moment, when they look all my documentation that I presented to them, one of the documentation, the inspection report, which is dated May 2007, I purchased the property August 2007, the records from LA County Assessors' Office, everything shows when I purchased, when those non-conforming conditions exist before I purchased the property, way before, 20 to 60 years ago. And eventually, the appraisal report, which values the house based on the garage size, based on the patio, based on the total condition of the house. It has an AC, it is best. So now I would like to understand why the city is not finding a reasonable solution to this non-conforming condition. This is something that has been done 20 to 60 years ago, and I am a very meticulous person. I'm an accountant, and when I do my volunteer work with tax preparers, I teach them how to be responsible taxpayers. And I'm a very reasonable person. I know what I'm talking about. And I am asking and requesting from the city council members and the other officials who have access to this information, I have additional information, just to find a reasonable solution for this.
Calla can tell you now, staff has taken note of what you've said here tonight, and I know you've seen a lot of people in the city, I heard the names you mentioned, and someone, hopefully someone else-
It's an ongoing code enforcement case right now, as my understanding.
There's always more to it than we see here. So, you know, council can't do anything here. We've noted it, staff has noted it. We've got to fill in the missing pieces. All I can tell you is the staff will look at it. It's an ongoing case. Mr. Agony, can you meet with her after?
After. After the speaker is completed, I can give you a brief-
You're complete.
What we're doing.
Her time is up anyhow.
Before, Mr. Agony, I just got a quick question. So just want to make sure, do we penalize home buyers who are buying, I understand that, you know, let's say they buy something that's non-conforming, but something that happened in the '40s, really?
Actually, the answer is depends, and no. I actually ask you to please not ask the specific questions based on the material that was presented. It is a very complicated case, and it involves the speaker and her neighbor, and we are dealing with two neighbor issues at the same time. And the city is being asked to intervene in issues that I'd rather explain this to the council at a, off the calendar, at a different time.
That's best. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, but I did my research. I put my life on this instead of having fun.
Believe that. I believe that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, I have no more cards. What is next?
Any new business?
No. Move to adjourns.
Okay.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. See you back on January the 21st.